Six, twenty, twenty-one, Board of Selectmen's meeting. First on the agenda this evening, we have a request for executive session. The rest of the agenda I will read when we're back in open session. Chase, do you have a?
Yep. Executive session per MGLC 38, Section 21, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints, or charges against, a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
A second. Jamie.
Ian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chase?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, as soon as Jeff gets back.
I'm listening.
... ...of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, next we will have public service announcements, a moment of silence, department reports, water and sewer, town administrator. Old business, we have mediation with Teamsters Local Number 170. COVID update. Action items include consideration and possible action on a memorandum of agreement among the Massachusetts Department of Transportation in the Town of Sturbridge, and the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division, for the design and engineering services for the Grand Trunk Trail Project. It's revised. Consideration and possible action on the rejection of bids for the Riverlands Trail System. Consideration and possible action on a Second Amendment to an agreement for service water and wastewater operations and maintenance, snow plowing. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Douglas Cutler as a full-time firefighter, a paramedic with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Anthony Giannfredo as a call firefighter with the Sturbridge Fire Department. Consideration and possible action on the acceptance of donations to the Sturbridge Senior Center. Consideration and possible action on the confirmation and appointment of Andy Zumios to equipment operator in the Sturbridge Department of Public Works. Consideration and possible action on the hiring of temporary snowplow operators. Consideration and possible action on an additional allocation of $1,000 of matching grant funds from the town administrator's budget to match a MYHA grant for software purchase for the facility's management. New business, we have the town clerk concerning polling location, correspondence, approval of minutes, citizens forum, and then we will have an executive session. Okay, Ian, any public service announcements?
I have none.
Chase?
I have none.
Jamie?
None.
I just have the one on the winter tree scavenger hunt at the Heinz Farm, starting December 1st, runs until January 20th. Okay, you can go on the Conservation Department website for all the information. You can take pictures and submit the photos. So it sounds like a fun thing. I know people have commented on some of the trees they've found out there already. Okay. Now, can we please have a moment of silence for those affected by the COVID, please? Okay, thank you. Next, we have department reports.
Shane wasn't able to join us this evening. The water and wastewater report is in your packet this evening. Butch may be able to answer any questions if there are any.
Okay, that's the second one Shane's missed.
Yes, yes, he's had some, some things that detract him from being able to attend.
How's the tank project coming?
Fisk Hill.
Talking about the Stallion Hill?
Yep.
We suspended that till spring.
Oh, okay. Just write that down. Anyone else have a question on Shane's report?
I don't have any.
Okay. So next we have the town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. My report's in front of you. VHB has been hired by DOT to start the process of preliminary engineering, the Route 20, first phase roundabout at 131 and New Boston Road. So I think that's exciting. They've reached out about utility information in the corridor and different elements to various side roads and streets. So that's underway, which is very exciting. I'm sure the board will have opportunities. There'll be a public comment session and public input sessions along the way, but VHB is just gathering information now to, to start their base plan.
Right, and we'll have to make it clear, this isn't the huge, huge project that was presented. This is the smaller one, isn't it?
It's the one that was in the tourist commercial district plan.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know what the differences were, but I'm sure it'll be designed as it needs to be designed.
Okay.
And then the representatives from ACT Telecom, our radio consultants, were in town on Monday, Tuesday. They spent some quality time with fire department, police department, public works, schools, to get some background on the existing radio system, looked at the dispatch, looked at the tower sites, and again, gathering background information to come up with what's the next 20-year plan for communications in, in Sturbridge. So that was, that was a positive thing. We do have an additional agenda item this evening. There's a Hawker and Pedlar license on the diash for you all this evening. And again, we've come to a resolution on the job description for the deputy chief, and we can talk about that in the next item. We also, one of the cars that was, one of the Ford Explorers?
Escape.
Escape, has met its demise. So we're down a car until we can get another one. Hopefully, the cars for the police department will be in so we can kind of move some things around and take some spares. But they're, we're down a car for now. The frame, what is the frame rod of that, right? Yeah.
Oh, I was just going to ask.
Yeah, frame rotted. Didn't have a lot of miles on it, just had a lot of years, so.
That can happen.
Yeah.
Okay, let's look at the application for Hawker and Pedlar license. Does anybody have any questions on it?
The gentleman that was applying isn't here yet.
Oh.
So.
Is he going to be here?
He's supposed to be here, but, you know, six and one half dozen.
Well, we can put it aside for...
Okay.
If he shows up.
All right.
Okay. Okay, next we have the Teamsters Local Number 170.
Yes.
Jeff?
Thank you. Chief Crosso and Jim Marks were able to come to a resolution on a mutually agreeable job description for the deputy chief. And I'll ask the chief to, to jim and...
Yeah, I want to thank Jim and Jeff for their participation in this. We were able to come to an agreement on some changes to the job description, some that I feel are appropriate, that were suggested by the union. We're also, once this has been approved, I will draft a policy for the process, similar to what we have for lieutenant's promotion, and I will work with Jim and the Teamsters and the firefighters to develop that policy, and we'll bring that before you once that's been developed.
Policy as far as what, chief?
The process of, of how we will go about the hiring. So for example, we're going to implement an assessment center.
Yes, I thought we approved that, didn't we?
That was the request, and that's what the board had directed the staff to do. So the assessment center, why don't you explain what that will be?
So once we have the job description, that gets the candidates in the door, and then we will put them through an assessment center to determine their qualifications. What we have tentatively agreed on to this point is that the assessment center will then provide a list of, they will rank the candidates, but they will only give me the top three without a numerical ranking. So I will know who the top three are, I won't know how they finished in the top three, and then our agreement is, we will be able to choose the best qualified candidate, the best fit for our department from those top three.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, now, as far as the job description goes.
Yes, I would respectfully request, if there's a way to expedite having that adopted and approved, there is going to be a 30-day posting period for this position, and then we will have to schedule the assessment center. So right now, we're looking at somewhere in February. If, if we can expedite the adoption of it, that will just help us get the person hired and onboard that much sooner.
Okay, chief, I know you and Jeff would like to expedite to get a person onboard, but as I mentioned, I have major problems. First of all, I have never seen a department where the workers have had input into what they want in a job description of this period. It doesn't work that way. I can't think of an instance it's ever happened in town. I can't think of an instance where it's happened in the private sector. I, we have a procedure here, and I always expect the procedures to be followed. Jeff brings forward job descriptions, votes to personnel, personnel votes, they pass it on to the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen vote. I know we want this position filled, but I do have major problems with the firefighters' union trying to run everything. And I know I've said it before, and I don't know about the rest of the board, but I am not going to vote in favor of the job description.
So can I just, can I, can I just say something real quick?
Um, no, Jim, I'm not going to recognize you to talk tonight.
Well, me and the chief worked...
It's up to the board.
But Mary, Mary, no disrespect, but me and the chief worked diligently to try to come to a resolution. I ask that you respectfully recognize me so I can have a few words. I'm not looking to get into any...
Jamie, I recognize that you worked hard, and the chief worked hard, but I have major problems with the process, as I said. Okay, questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of things I may...
Jamie.
So what's the, so I don't, I tend to agree with, yeah, that was going to be my first question, but I tend to agree with Mary, but I don't understand why we take this off the normal track. It should go to personnel, it should be done the normal way. I understand that there's been collective bargaining process here that's taken it off in some ways, but there's, now that this issue's been resolved, and we appreciate everybody working to resolve them, I understand you guys wanted done yesterday, but another week, a couple of weeks is not going to be outcome determinative, we should just do things the right way for the process, which is why this was referred back to you in the first place, if I recall the meeting properly. That's my comment.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, no, and so I guess the other part, but in terms of the, the substantive job description, what, what's changed from what was sent to us in our packet last week?
Uh, last week?
Was it?
Yeah, basically, the, we've tweaked under certifications and licenses, a couple different things that required some additional things upfront, and then allowed for 24 months for some other things. So there wasn't, it was making sure that anybody that came through the door met certain criteria, but also was allowed or provided some time to get, to reach the epitome of what we wanted in a deputy chief. And still preserve the ability of the town to attract candidates. Yeah, attract candidates. It wasn't too exclusive.
Okay. Ian, Chase, any comment?
I mean, I guess my only comment is, because I agree with Jamie and Mary about another couple of weeks, do this the right way, get it through personnel. What are, we're just looking to exp, but you guys are looking to expedite it tonight to get this job filled quicker.
Well, that, and, and I certainly understand the process, and no disrespect to the personnel committee, there's great people on it, but if this is changed at the personnel level, we start over. This has been a process, and in my, and again, without, and I appreciate Jim's thoughtfulness and his ability to, to work through this with the chief, you know, at the meeting the other night, this was about an assessment, not a job description. So we've managed to find, again, jump over another hurdle, we're, let's get it done. And I get the process, I do, but to me, this is about product at this point.
I still think process is better than product. If you don't have a good, if you don't have a good process, you're not going to get a good product.
I understand, but there really is no ability without opening the entire basket again to tweak what's in front of you.
Well, I still have problems with why they think they could tweak the job description in the first place.
And I certainly understand that, and if the board wants to say we're going to go with the existing job description, then vote that way. But I don't know that that's where you are.
Well, we, we had already voted for it.
I agree.
Back in April.
I understand.
So what's the, I mean, but really, we are talking, I mean, we're not talking about two months, a month, we're, this is, you can have this in front of us in the next meeting, correct? Or is it going to be...
It depends on the ability to get the personnel committee together.
That shouldn't be too much of a problem.
I, I don't know. We've not reached out to them.
Well...
Could we ask that they try to move as fast as possible and get it back to us? I mean...
We can ask whatever you want to ask.
Right.
I need three of them to vote yes. And it was a split vote to begin with, even create the position from the personnel committee.
But they did approve the job description.
I understand.
Once it was created.
That would be my request.
You know, we can certainly find a day within the next two weeks before our meeting for the Personnel.
I have seven days, seven weekdays left before the meeting.
Yeah, we've had quick meetings before.
I, I understand, and I'll do my best to get them together.
So, so I guess I'll, I'd ask a follow-up question. Is the union going to support this as drafted going forward?
Yes, sir, yeah, we can go whole on.
But Jamie, they don't have to.
I understand that.
That's the problem.
And my point is more that if all, everybody's rolling in the same direction, I anticipate that the Personnel Committee probably is not going to just throw themselves into this for no good reason. That's.
Oh, no, no, no. But I, you know, the Personnel Committee, and I've been on it for years, it's fair, and they look at things fair, and, you know, they do tweak things sometimes, and the Board of Selectmen, when the Personnel have passed it to the board, the board has also tweaked a couple of times.
Sure, but this is pretty well tread over land at this point, so that, that's more of my point, so we've had all this process.
Yeah.
We, we. We spent a lot of time.
Yeah. The, the major stakeholders in the fire department support it, so that should have a louder-than-average voice to me than, than in this type of case.
So, we'll try to set up a meeting.
I think the point is, and I knew you were going to, but I think the point is that we're trying to work together to get past the issues that we have.
You have not been recognized, so please be quiet. Thank you.
I wish you would recognize me, Mary.
You're curmudgeon about it, but this is, this is the way it should be done, and this is the way it's going to be done. And we're not going to lose much time. Okay?
That's fine, I'll just wait for citizens to go on the bottom.
James, if you'd like to contribute something, you can write a letter and get it to us quickly, an email. Okay? So Jeff, you'll try to set up a.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick. Gentlemen, thank you for coming in, and Merry Christmas, and it'll all work out.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, what is? Okay, so next, we're still on old business. Do you have any old business, Ian?
No. I have no old.
Chase?
No.
Jamie? I just have a question on the chat review committee.
Mm-hmm.
Have they?
They're going to meet tomorrow for the first time.
Okay, good. And is, and all five agreed to work on it?
Yes, all five will participate, some remotely, some in person.
Okay, fine. And also on our Town Administrator Search Committee, we need to send a email out to all the department heads, what interest anyone would have in the Board of Selectmen, also think about if you would like to serve. And we need to get something on the website, we need three citizens.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? So at our next meeting, we can pick the department head and the Board of Selectmen rep.
Okay.
And we'll see how many citizens we have. Okay?
We still have COVID under old business.
My ear, Jeff, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. We still have COVID to do under old business.
Okay.
Oh, well, the report's there, we did a booster clinic at the Senior Center for 42 people. Then, as a corollary, as in, I can't speak tonight, I apologize, it's been a long day, it's only Monday. As part of the union contract with, with the police department, you awarded $3,000 to the full-time members. We've gone through the process and looked at the prorated amounts for the part-timers, which are not in the union, and the recommendation is before you tonight, Ashley Griffin, she was a full-time dispatcher during the emergency period, Matthew Cole worked 841 hours, Michelle Rosano, Mark Whiting, all had a proportionate share of work during the emergency period. We'd ask that those awards be given as a prorated amount of the $3,000. And those amounts are listed in.
Question on those? Would someone like to make a motion, then?
I'll make the motion to approve the ARPA premium pay.
I'll second that.
Any questions? All in favor? Okay, four, nothing?
Thank you. And then the survey on the other use of the ARPA funds, we're going to start collating that information and getting it to the board. We had some great responses, a lot of feedback, it was pretty good.
Well, that's good.
Very good.
Okay, next, we have action items. The long one. Discussion, consideration of action on the agreement of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Town of Sturbridge, and the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, Eastern Federal Lands Highway Division for the design and engineering services for the Grand Trunk Project. Jeff?
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. As we've discussed briefly, we currently have an agreement with Eastern Federal Lands to administer the Grand Trunk Trail project or the Westville section of the Grand Trunk Trail project. Their, their need for overhead and engineering and administrative support is very arduous and expensive. So in our discussions with that group, we can take over the project, the town can take over the project, take the funds that have been allocated, and save a couple hundred thousand dollars. And that's what this agreement does, it turns the project over to the town, it turns the money over to the town. We will still have to engage a, an engineer to handle the bidding, the inspections, all the necessary reporting, but we won't have to pay 80 days of their food and beverage and lodging, in addition to two other engineers at the state level to support the project. So, we'd ask that you sign, approve the agreement, and we can get the project done at the local level. You can see on the statement of the finances, this three-quarters of mile project is, is now at tipping the scale at $1.4 million.
You know.
Yeah, huh?
Yeah.
I've paid Four Lane Streets for less than that.
Okay, any questions from the board? Would someone like to make a motion, then, to approve it?
Wait, I, we're making a motion to reject the bid.
No.
No, this is from the agreement, this is five A.
That's a different.
It's a different trail.
Yeah. Okay, no, this is the, Jeff, you didn't have a motion, did you?
I thought I did.
I just got.
Did I not make one? Didn't I write one? All right, so just a motion? Yeah, it's on there. Oh, my memo's not in there.
Oh.
Yeah, just a motion to approve the agreement.
I make a motion to approve the agreement, to get a new package. I subscribe to that.
You can read, you can read that.
Sorry about that.
No worries.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, next, we have the rejection.
Yes, this is the second time this project's been bid, and it's still over budget, we have $75,000, this, this bid was 104. The Trails Committee has reworked the scope of work again, so we're in the process of putting new, a new bid package out. Hopefully, this will be acceptable. We've extended the workdays, too, to make it less compressed. We'll see how it goes, but for these, for this round of bids, we're asking that the board reject all the bids, or the bid, we only got one.
Okay, any questions? Okay, somebody want to make a motion, then?
We'll make a motion to reject the bid from H.M. Noons &amp; Sons Construction.
Is there a second?
No.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, next, we have, let's see. Is Robin here?
Ms. Butch.
Butch. One, yeah.
Butch did change, we should make Robin do Butch.
I know. I went, I went to the wrong letter, they're all capitals. Good evening, Butch.
Good evening. This is due to the fact that we, we don't have the plow drivers that we should have, and most towns are having the same problem. But we do own all the trucks that the Water and Sewer Department drive, so it makes sense to have Viola guys plow for us. I never figured out why we never did this in the past, but I'd like to, like to go with that, that theory.
I don't mean to interrupt, but what about the hydrants? They still help with the hydrants, don't they?
Yeah, Viola does half the town, and the Fire Department does the other half.
Just a comment, if I may. We're still working out the details of this arrangement between our, the town's attorney and Viola's attorney. There's a question on indemnification and where those lie, you know, the trucks are ours, the drivers are theirs, who's, who's covering who? We have my in the middle of that from an insurance perspective, so anything, if you so choose to approve this tonight, it would be subject to the town attorney in saying this works, please.
Okay, any questions from the board?
The, the Viola employees currently plow the facility, it's just off-site stuff that they'll be doing.
Yeah, all their trucks are already equipped with plows, so it makes sense for us to utilize them.
So are you going to assign them a route, just like you would a DBW truck?
Yep, yep, and it's nice because they have the radios, it'd be, it'd be just a great asset for us to have them doing this. Plus, I don't want to be short on plows.
Okay, someone willing to make a motion, then?
I'll make the motion to approve the plow drivers at the rate of $55 an hour, subject to attorneys agreeing.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second, yeah, bet you.
No, you go.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Douglas Cutler as a full-time firefighter paramedic.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm pleased to bring you Doug Cutler tonight for consideration as, for appointment as a full-time firefighter paramedic. Doug's a Brookfield resident, he's been in public safety since 1994. He previously worked in law enforcement, the fire service, and currently in EMS. Since 2002, he's worked as a paramedic for American Medical Response out of Springfield. He was deployed to Gulfport, Mississippi after Hurricane Katrina and responded to the 2011 tornado that hit, hit our area. He passed his Fire Academy physical agility test, and we are in the process of scheduling him to attend the recruit fire training at the Springfield, Springfield campus of the Massachusetts Fire Academy in March. During the interim, he'll receive orientation training in the firehouse, as well as through Harrington Hospital, so that he'll be able to work as a paramedic. And he has successfully passed his background, which was conducted by the police department. Upon his appointment, his rate of pay will be $24.76 an hour, consistent with the collective bargain, current collective bargaining agreement, and that would be effective December 7th. If you approve tonight, his first day of work will be Saturday, December 11th.
Okay, Mr. Cutler, do you have any questions or comments you want to make?
No, I don't have this time.
You like to hunt?
I have been hunting with your son.
Little birdie told me that. Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion?
Sure, I will move to confirm and appoint Douglas Cutler has a full-time firefighter paramedic with the Service Fire Department.
Yeah, $24.76.
Twenty-four seventy-six per hour.
Is there a second?
I'll second Jamie's motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, welcome aboard.
Yep, have a good one. Congratulations.
Okay, next, we have a recommendation for the chief to confirm the appointment of Anthony Gianfrido as a part-time firefighter slash EMTB with the Sturbridge Fire Department, effective December 7th, starting salary of $20.84. Chief?
Yep, Anthony apologizes he couldn't be here tonight because he had a previous work complication. He's a Spencer resident, works part-time for the Spencer Fire Department currently. He's also a pharmacy technician at one of the local hospitals. He's a certified firefighter one and two, and he's also an EMT, so Anthony's ready to hit the ground running, and we're looking forward to having him as well.
Okay, questions, comments from the board? Motion?
We'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Anthony Gianfrido as a part-time firefighter EMTB with the Sturbridge Fire Department, effective December 7th, 2021, with a starting salary of $20.84.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to see some guys getting at it. Yeah.
Okay, next, we have, the Senior Center has received the following gifts, and the staff requests the board accept the gifts with thanks from Don Taft and Quabog and Kwakamkwasit Lake Association. In addition to an early donation, they gave five $25 gift cards, six whole turkeys, and for Mary Lawless, 20 full turkey meals.
I'd like to accept the donation with thanks to Don Taft and the Quabog Lake Association and Mary Lawless.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
I hope they weren't waiting for our approval. Yeah. A little late.
Next, we have a request from Butch to appoint Andy Zumelis as an equipment operator.
Yes, Andy's a longtime Sturbridge resident, he's been with us for four years. He has his CDL and his hydraulics license, and we have an opening as a, in the equipment operator position, so we'd like to promote him to that position.
Okay, questions from the board? We'll have to get someone to fill his.
It never ends.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move to confirm the appointment of Andy Zumelis, effective December 7th, 2021, with a salary of $25.97.
Per hour, just to.
Per hour, excuse me.
We don't want, I think it's monthly.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay, discussion, all in favor? Okay. Okay, next is Butch's request to.
Of course, no news, Butch.
Yes. Well, this is a.
Hiring of temporary snowplow.
Yes, we did this in the last town I worked, and we had three, just residents that had experience that we hired every year to just drive our trucks, because we have a lot more pickups than we have people to drive. So we, we could put two or three people in pickup trucks in, in extreme cases. And in this particular case, we have, we haven't worked out all the details yet, but we have the tree warden, we have one of the bus drivers, and we have Brian McCroy, still works in our office, that are all-time employees, but we'd like to use them, and then if, if I, if that doesn't work out, I'd like to be able, I'd like to be able to put an ad out and hire a qualified driver or two, just for the winter season, so they'd be temporary winter employees.
Here's a typo on the third bullet point, it says, Department of Public Support is net, it says not a mechanic for the school department, it should say now a mechanic for the school.
Oh, I took it to me not.
No, he's.
I thought he was a mechanic for the town.
He was, he jumped.
And then the buses.
He just moved over to the school department.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the use of these employees for snowplow operations at the following rate per hour: Russ Jamelin, $20.03, Tony Crane, $20.03, Brian McCroy, $34.18.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
Just a question, does that not allow me to hire people from the general public?
Well, you got to go through the process and bring them back.
I agree.
Yeah, go ahead and advertise.
Yeah, I don't plan on, if I can get those three out, I think I'm all set. And if Viola comes, if Viola comes through, so. I do have one quick question, is there anybody here going to speak at the citizens forum that would like to ask me any questions, because I was actually going to leave the meeting, but I see people out here, I just don't know what they're here for. So you guys all set with me for any questions? All right, thanks.
I'll call you home if there is. You can come back.
Not till, not till, not till after the game, though.
It does. It doesn't start for another hour. What are you doing?
Yeah, see you back here at 8:45.
Okay, next we have consideration and possible action on an additional allocation of $1,000 of matching grant funds for the purchase of facility management software. Good evening, Robin.
Good evening. Thank you for seeing me again tonight. I received word on November 24th that Maya approved our grant, but they did not give us their full $10,000 maximum allotment. We received $9,000 instead. So the last time, the board provided us with $1,316.96 from grant matching funds. Tonight, we're asking for an additional $1,000 to cover the gap.
Okay, any questions from the board? Someone want to make a motion then?
Sure, I will move to authorize an additional $1,000 be allocated from the town administrator's matching grant fund budget for the purposes of facilities management softwares, as previously discussed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, new business, town clerk, Lynn.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm back again. So I am here this evening. When I was here last month, we had looked at the Sturbridge Worship Center at 9 Mashpog Road for our new polling location. The state has declined that location due to the ADA complacency of their ramp for the handles. So we have looked around, and we've come to the best solution that we're going to have the next special town election, which is scheduled for January 24th, here at the Sturbridge Town Hall, in this exact room location. So we're asking the board for their approval at this time to use this as a temporary location until we can find an adequate location for our elections going forward.
Okay, questions, comments? Because we used it for early voting.
Correct, we've used it in early voting, and it went very well in the past. So for the next election at least, it will work. We'll make it work.
There's only the one question.
Right, exactly.
Okay, somebody want to make the motion then?
Make a motion to approve the town hall for your local election.
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor? Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
Have a nice day.
Yes, you too. Okay, next we have correspondence. Chase?
All right, Board of Selectmen's Office, correspondence, November 8, 2021. Letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Public Utilities, Department of Telecommunications and Cable Regulatory Bulletin, November 15, 2021. Letter to municipal official from Charter Communications. Upcoming changes, December 2021. Letter from Community Food Collaborative, December 3, 2021. Letter to the Board of Selectmen from Concerned Taxpayer.
I actually had a new business item. We just skipped, had a new business.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
Can we do it next week?
Yeah. I, um, I had a resident reach out to me and ask for an update on the Route 49 MBTA stop project that was proposed years ago.
Route 49?
So there's an MBTA, there was an MBTA stop, I guess, proposed for Route 49 at one point, many, many years ago. And they were curious if we could get an update as to that project as it pertains to the new infrastructure money, and if that's something that's going to come to fruition ever. And I said I would ask, because I didn't know.
We can find out.
Yep, that's all I'm looking for, is an update and where it's headed and what's going on with it.
I mean, I never heard of it.
Yeah.
WRTA?
Uh, yeah, MBTA, whatever it is. Public transit on 49 and a train stop there, I guess, is the proposal.
Sure. I know they come out pretty far in Charlotte already.
That's a bus, right?
Yeah.
This was a train, this is a train stop along the current train order.
Oh, yes. Now, that's way down the road, maybe with the new federal...
And that's, you know, I think where their, mine was, shovel-ready projects, other things.
I believe three different plans on that, but...
Just curious.
It's moving, it's moving.
The wheels of government move slow, we all know that, yeah.
Slower than me.
All right, we'll find out.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, that's right. Okay.
See if Thomas has come.
Please.
Thomas, the train.
We have all the reports on that and everything. Thomas has quite active...
I'm sure there's been voluminous studies on it.
Oh, yeah?
Somewhere, yeah.
I have all that stuff, too. I can forward it on to you, it was included.
In big bucks?
Yeah.
You know, government keeps printing money.
Okay, so did anyone else have new business that I skipped? Okay, so approval of minutes. We have the minutes of October 28th, 2021. Any corrections, additions, deletions?
I don't see anything.
Okay, motion to approve is written?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, minutes of November 15th, 2021. Any corrections, additions? Jeff, I just have one small one. On the first page?
Uh-huh.
When we made a motion to go out of executive session, after that, it should say public session before public service announcements.
Okay.
Because it makes it sound like we did it all.
Okay. Sounds good.
So is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion, all in favor?
Still have the additional agenda item, the young man hasn't shown up yet.
Oh, yeah.
Aquar Cretler. These solar panel keepers, they're very, very, yeah.
Flaky?
No, but...
No, well, I don't mean flaky like, I mean, they're not consistent.
Well, I don't know, you know, I don't know. He's just not here.
Yeah, because, I mean, we've had them come in and not come in, and then come in and then not do it. So just notify him, he can come in some other time.
Okay.
Because usually on those, we make a contingent sunset.
All right, we'll let him know.
Okay. Okay, citizens forum, Steve?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Steve?
My name's Steve Zoto. For the ones that don't know me, I live at Walk-upon, and I'm here to give you a brief history of some of the problems that the people of Walk-upon have had over a number of years with the Department of Public Works and the Department of Health and Services, or whatever they want to call them. For the past couple of years now, we've been trying to get our water tested, which has proved to be very contaminated. And we tried to get, they have a remediation program, a salt remediation program that's in hand. But in order to get through their program, we also found out we have the privilege of having arsenic in our water. And now the arsenic is in its natural state, unbeknownst to most of us. And right adjacent to the highway itself, there's probably maybe 30 families that are involved in the harness and all this other stuff. The sodium chloride is the thing that's been really bothering us now that we've got arsenic in it. So we tried to get into the program where they would actually remediate and supply us town water, okay, which they would have to make the tie-in to the town, bring it to all our homes, okay, if there's a number of them. Or they have other options, they're drilling separate wells, okay, to see if they can get below the areas of the arsenic, or whatever the case may be, or the sodium. Well, in order for us to be qualified for that, first of all, they require us to get rid of the contaminant first, which is the arsenic. And I go, wait a minute, why do we have to pay to get? Because some of those filtration systems through osmosis, or whatever the case may be, requires maybe a $3,000, $4,000 bill to get rid of the arsenic, and then we'd be part of the program. And we would have to do this for a solid year, and then get into what, instead of using sodium chloride in our water softeners, we'd have to use potassium chloride, which costs maybe $27 for a 40-pound bag versus the $6 that we're paying now for the sodium chloride, because they want to make sure that we're not contaminating our own wells. So, well, they turned us down on that. And I've been in touch with Todd Smaller, who's our state rep, and he's been on board with us right along, right from day one. And actually, I've been fighting the state since 1985, to believe it or not. But then, at that time, it was under the Massachusetts Turnpike. And once they washed their hands of it, the state took over, and then it became another whole new fight again. So we're trying to get the rules changed, okay? And Linda's been working with us, could call us. And there's some studies that prove that the sodium chloride gets into the ledge, which in turn releases the arsenic. So if that's the case, they create the problem, then they give us the arsenic. So we feel they should supply us the town water and let them pick up the whole cost of it. And from what I understand, there are estimated costs of about $5 million if this goes through, because we have the unique situation at Walk-upon where everything, all the resources that Sturbridge has to offer were separated by the turnpike, and there's no way of getting around it unless we go underneath it. So we're trying to get, and I went through every house that was available at Walk-upon, plus some product road, and the majority are all for, number one, getting water across the street, even though the state wouldn't be required to get the rest of the homes, but at least we'd get it on this side. And then the town could, they said they'd be more than willing to get more customers. But as long as they get it over, you know, through the turnpike. So we're looking for, I've had petitions signed, three separate ones, one for the water, one for the sewer, and one for the noise barriers. Now, the noise barriers are very unique in a sense, because once they remove the toll stations down at the bottom of the hill, those trucks, in the middle of the night, they put on their jake brakes, and it actually vibrates the house when they put them on, because they're all trying to slow down with their... But the speeds have increased substantially. Now, we've gotten response from Todd Smaller with the Department of Public Works stating that Walk-upon is not in an area that, you know, that was under the original study. But their study, some of the studies took place in 1988 and 1992. I said, but no studies were taken after the toll houses were removed. So Todd is willing, he says, now that we got a response from the Department of Public Works, he says, Steve, see if we can get the town of Sturbridge through the Board of Selectmen, okay, to support our needs along with the petitions. He would be all in favor if we can get our support through you people and have a meeting with the Department of Public Works and Department of Traffic, and see what we can do to put more pressure on the state. And in essence, this is why I'm here, and I'm trying to get your approval, if we can. I know, you know, I've got to go through proper channels with the addendum and agenda and whatever, but I would hope that we could probably do something for Walk-upon, and hopefully we can get sewers installed again. I know it's been 20 years, but guess what? The people that voted for against the sewers before, now their sewers are failing again, because it's been over 20 years. And they're saying, now I got to pay $30,000 to $40,000, you know, to do their repairs, whereas they should have cut the grant and paid for it. At one time, we would have water sewer here in the first time. So a lot of them, now, the majority of Walk-upon is in approval, the, all three petitions, and that's why I'm here. Hopefully, we can enlighten everybody as to what kind of problems we've had at Walk-upon, and hopefully we can get your support.
Yeah, I'm sure on the first one with the barriers, if you get us all that, because the other two going to entail a lot of research and a lot of steps. Ultimately, both those would even have to go to town meeting vote.
Yeah. I think we also, if I may, I think we probably should have a, maybe counsel, look at what our abilities are to remediate, because they are carrying an unfair load on that.
Oh, yeah, but I don't, Steve was basically on the sound barriers, asking for our support.
Oh, no, I understand.
Yeah, on those, too.
It's a very, but like, all of the complicated stuff, once you get into it. So I'm fine with the sound boards.
Yeah.
And then I was, I was kind of going to your point.
Yeah, the other two after that are...
Because it gets much more complicated after that.
Yeah, because it's cost estimates and...
Yeah, and what we can do.
And I'm sure.
Well, that's why the state is totally against it.
Oh, yeah.
They're fighting us for everything they possibly can, because they know they're, they definitely know they're in the wrong. They know they've contaminated our wells, and so they're trying everything they possibly can with the noise barrier, even if we just got signs prohibiting, you know, jake brakes from use, you know. We're not, and Todd, again, says if we can get a meeting with all our heads, and we would have, actually have a better chance of getting something from DOT and let them be responsible for it.
Yeah, so if you get in touch with Jeff, he can set up and...
Yeah, I brought Janice because she can be my interpreter. I have a hearing disability.
Oh, I've got a blocked ear. All night.
It will work on.
Okay.
Okay. I hope he pays you well, Janice. Okay, so you can get in touch, Janice has the card, okay?
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Okay, anytime, Steve. Have a nice holiday.
Thanks to you.
Yes.
Okay, anyone else on citizens forum?
I would like to be recognized.
There's somebody else, Jim.
Well, yeah.
Yep.
Jim, we were hoping that Jim would be able to speak before us.
Okay, could you give your names, please?
Taylor Nelson, 174 Lake Road.
Susan Shay, 170 Lake Road.
And we'd ask that Jim be able to speak before we ask our questions.
May I ask who Jim is?
Jim Marks, he's on, he's on the phone call now, yeah. Jim, are you there?
I'm asked to be recognized.
Yep.
I don't think he heard you. He's asking, he's...
We want to have Jim go ahead, right?
Can you hear us, Jim?
I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
All right, so obviously, everybody knows where I am. Jim Marks, team's local seven business agent, represents firefighters. You know, I just wanted to point out, and I'm not looking to have an argument, I just want to point something out. This all started with the no-confidence vote, with our firefighters having no confidence in the department. I understand that you say and you're passionate about the union should have no say in a personnel job description. We've had issues all along, making sure that the right qualified individuals are there, and to make sure that the firefighters feel safe, and know that when they're relying on somebody, when they have to go into a building, that person is going to be able to, be able to, you know, command the scene and make the right decisions. The changes that we were asking for in the job description, that when I sat down with the chief, it was pretty obvious that the changes that were made were qualification changes. And after a lot of discussions with the chief, many, many times, we had some meetings with Jeff as well, that he understood where the firefighters were coming from. And I know, you know, you get very upset, and you say the union's trying to push, you know, the town around and trying to have say in every aspect of it. But right now, you have a broken fire department, and we're trying to move forward. And we're trying to get through how we do that. There's staffing issues, there's issues with, you know, not having enough men and women to call on the instances or situations that happened within Sturbridge, and you're relying on, you know, other towns. on, you know, other towns, mutual aid, to come do those. So we're trying to make sure that we have the right individuals in place, whether it's lieutenant exam or the deputy chief, to make sure that the town of Sturbridge is set up to be able to respond to the citizens of Sturbridge, the residents of Sturbridge, and to make sure that the town is safe. And, you know, like I, once again, you know, it's frustrating to me that you won't let us speak in those, and we probably could have shed a little bit more light on some of that. I understand there's a personnel department that needs to approve that, and, you know, talking to Richard, he said that that is usually the process, and I'm okay with that. But the frustration of that is that you continually don't let us talk, and you continually, you know, whether you realize it or not, you continually hit and hit and hit, and call names to the fire department, when you guys are out there defending, going on calls, putting their lives in danger to protect all of you. And it's frustrating to them, it's frustrating to me, and I wish that dialogue could change. Yes, we haven't had a good relationship, I'm not going to deny that, but in the end, there's a lot of things going on with Sturbridge and the fire department that need to be addressed, and we need to work together to address those issues. Right now, there's firefighters that are exhausted, working 80, 90 hours a week to make sure that you have an ambulance, or you have a fire truck on call. There's situations in town that mutual aid were called, and the end result was, it's glad they came, but the response time was long. So, you know, there's a lot of frustration there. I just wish that in the future, you would let us speak on the topic, especially when we asked to speak in front of the selectmen, and not be shut down. I understand the frustration on your part, I understand you think we're trying to bully you guys, but that's not what it's about. It's about to make sure that the men and women of Sturbridge Fire have the right people in command to make sure when a situation is called, that they're going to come out of that building and go home to their families. And whether you guys want to, you know, brush that off or not, that's reality, and that's their concern. And they're passionate individuals that are doing force overtime, and doing what they have to do to make sure that that department is staffed right now and can do what they can do. So, you know, with that said, I'm going to leave it alone. I appreciate letting go to the personnel, and we'll see what they have to say, but we're truly trying to move the department forward and get a working relationship with the town to make sure that all the benefits that you guys enjoy now with the fire department stay there, and, you know, having a nice long conversation with the chief. You know, we understand that we have to have more conversations and discussions on a regular basis, and we're determined to make sure that happens, and make sure that we can move forward in a respectful way that benefits all. Thank you.
Okay. James, we don't disagree that there are problems, and we're trying to work together to improve things, but we're certainly trying to work in the proper way, okay? So thank you for your words, and have a nice holiday, and we'll get moving on the personnel as quickly as we can.
You as well, thank you.
So my question, my first question would be, so the Board of Selectmen is in acknowledgement that there are some major issues going on right now with the fire department? Because we came here for the mediation update, it said mediation with Teamsters, and so we were wondering what this is.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't say there were major problems. There are problems, there are problems in any, any department.
Okay. So a unanimous vote of no confidence, from a citizen's perspective, would be considered a major issue, especially when, we understand that the firefighters are working 80 or 90 hours per week each, and are being put into force overtime, they are exhausted, there are issues there. You wouldn't consider that, from a citizen's perspective, a major issue for our fire department?
I happen to be a citizen, and I happen to sign payroll warrants and everything, and I really haven't seen those hours. I would have to see exactly who's working 80, 90 hours.
Can I make a statement?
Jeff?
The issue on the agenda was about the job description, which was resolved this afternoon. That's what that was. In regards to the 80, 90 hours a week, we have two vacancies, which we couldn't fill because one was the deputy chief, and we were working on the job description, and the second was a lieutenant's position, which we can't fill. So there's two bodies right there we're down.
Yep.
There are two other bodies we're down, because they're out on medical, which is not job-related. So we have four positions which are not being used right now, and once we're back to that, plus the people we hired this evening, that enhances our crew capabilities.
So don't we typically have eight to 10 on-call firefighters? And right now, we have two, correct? Or one or two?
We rotate between five or six at any one time. Call firefighting is very difficult to sustain.
Mm-hmm. So...
But don't forget, Sturbridge at one time was all volunteer.
Well, Sturbridge is a lot different since...
No, I know, but I mean, with the times, they change.
Yes.
It's difficult to get those people.
Okay, so...
We hired another call this evening.
Yes. So you're saying that you're only short two positions, that's deputy and lieutenant, for firefighting? Now that you've hired a full-time firefighter, you're...
No, what I'm saying is, we're short four right now, because two are out on medical, which was not job-related.
Yep.
And two positions we've not been able to hire, because we've been discussing those positions with the union.
So you're only short two actual firefighter, paramedic positions, that, because they're on medical leave, so there's no open positions in the fire...
Well, we hired one this evening.
Yep, so there's no more open positions available? I'm...
I don't believe so.
I'm just, okay.
Well, there's two vacancies, the lieutenant and the deputy chief.
Okay.
Right? And if, the anticipation is if a lieutenant moves up, there'll be another vacancy as a firefighter, right?
Yes.
That's how that works.
Yep. Okay. Any questions?
As things exist right now, how are our response times to emergencies? I understand there was a fire alarm at the senior center a while ago, and that might have been a little bit slow on the response time.
Yeah, we have to look at why mutual aid wasn't called. That was, we have a problem with that fire alarm. It goes off routinely.
Yep.
So, yeah.
Okay. I'm just, so there's no update regarding the past meeting, when mediation have, has mediation begun between the firefighters and the chief?
Yes, that was the subject of the deputy chief.
So, so the only, the only issue that was discussed was the job posting?
Was this deputy chief's position.
Okay, so there's no issue on why the firefighters voted no confidence in the chief? And they, and that's been...
I'm not, we've not discussed that.
Okay, so...
We've discussed everything at mediation that the firefighters wanted to discuss.
Okay. And so, in, are they being put onto force overtime right now?
I would imagine so.
Okay.
As the police department does too, when they're short.
Of course.
And as every department does when they're short, in every city and every town that has a paid department.
It just seems like the firefighters are trying to speak up, and they're just kind of being squashed, and it's not...
No, I take offense at that, because this board has listened to them, and we've listened to them with an open mind. But sometimes, as Jim said, they're frustrated, we're frustrated too. We've been told what we should be doing, not working with us to find out what will work for both of us.
Okay, well, I think we should definitely put the effort, and I don't know what there is that anything can be done, but they're a really important part of this town, and they're, they're leaving. How many have resigned in the past 18 months?
That happens.
No, it doesn't, it's happening because of what's happening in Sturbridge. That's why they are leaving.
Can we move on to other questions, other than the fire department, please?
When a firefighter, paramedic resigns, do they have an exit interview?
They are afforded the opportunity.
Okay, and...
They don't have to.
They don't have to, okay. And do you have a polling of why they're leaving the department?
Some for more money, some it's more convenient.
Okay, so if we're...
Some are moving away.
Some are moving away.
And so none of that has anything to do with the current working conditions? You haven't had any firefighter in the past 18 months tell you that they're leaving, or the union let you know that they're leaving because of issues that they're having?
I'm not going to discuss personnel issues in a public forum.
Okay, so, because...
Because there's two sides to every story.
Right. Of course there are.
Right.
But we only, as citizens, we're only getting one.
That's right.
We're only getting...
Because as professionals, we're not entitled, nor are we going to discuss...
No resignation letter that we have received, and what we receive, has specifically stated working additions. Nobody has said that publicly, and these packets that we get, it is available online, you can download it, you could go back and look.
Yep, yep.
It, nobody specifically cited working additions.
Okay. I just...
Whether or not in the background that was there, whatever, but we cannot.
What I would say is, we've managed, in the past week, to overcome several of the hurdles we've had with the union, and I think those, and the conversations tonight have been positive, and that's where I want to leave it.
Okay, well...
It's certainly in a better place than it was three months ago.
Yeah, that's the point I would say with Ian, is that...
From your perspective, it's in a better place.
Well, that might be true, yeah, and, you know...
I don't think that the firefighters feel like they're in a better place than they were.
But do we not have this, you know...
We only see what happens.
We only see what happens with us in the fire department, okay? We don't need, I read this on Facebook.
I'm not reading anything on Facebook.
Madam Chair, if I may just make a comment. We can look at it from a, from a labor relations perspective, because we're dealing with the union. And I think Mr. Marks would agree, and I think the Teamsters would agree, and body language is indicative of anything else, the members of the fire department in the room here tonight would agree, that, yes, there has been a great deal of tension, I'm sure there are operational hurdles, it's difficult to tell from your vantage point and our vantage point, where the rubber hits the road on those things, right? But the meeting here tonight, as opposed to the meetings over the summer, were courteous, thoughtful, and professional by, I thought, everybody. There was a little tense moment here or there, but that's how it goes. So I know your points are all fair, just, you know, from your vantage, but in terms of just the engagement and working towards a common goal, if that's, if that's how we're measuring our success, well, then we've had quite a successful few months. It just, you know, started in a difficult place, certainly.
Okay, well, I mean...
Other questions?
So the vote of no confidence occurred in July, and it sounds as though, from what you're saying, that we've gotten a pretty good pace beyond that, and there's a lot more confidence on the part of the firefighters, and our response times are where they should be, and our staffing is, or will be soon where it should be.
Well, you've got to remember, we have more paid firefighters on staff than we've ever had before, ever. We've almost doubled the size of the department in the past five years.
That sounds good, but I don't know what the numbers were before, and I don't know what the numbers should be, or what the numbers are.
They were eight.
You know, without all the...
Well, there's no magic number, there's no magic number, right? We have, we're, in a, in a perfect world, we'd have four per shift. We have things called Kelly days. We have people that take vacation.
Do you have four per shift regularly?
When everybody's on board, yes. Now, again, there's vacation, sick time, Kelly days.
Yep.
And the benefit of the deputy chief's position, it traverses all the shifts every day, right? So that can backfill, and that was the design of the deputy chief's position, to enable that person to fill those roles, so they could jump on the ambulance when there's a call, when they jump on the fire department.
So that person is fully versed in every single thing.
They will be first in...
They're not just a substitute standby, they're, fill the position.
As, as the chief does now. They are fully certified to be a paramedic or an EMT, and they can fight fire. First and foremost, just like the police chief is and the lieutenant are, first and foremost, they're firefighters, paramedics, EMTs. That's their first priority. And that was the design of that position.
Now, the person who is, and maybe this is none of our business, I'm just curious how the process works, the person who's becoming the deputy fire chief, is that somebody who's moving up, who's a fireman?
That's the position that's there.
We got a recruit for that.
Yep.
We'll post the job once the board approves the job description, and we'll recruit and look at candidates and pick.
And it gets posted to the current staff first, or no? That's just, it goes out?
This is a non-union position. It gets posted to everybody.
I see. Okay, I'm just curious.
Even in the charter, every position gets posted to everybody, in every department.
All right.
Yes.
Just from our perspective, and just from our friends, we understand that there's a lot of frustration within public safety in the town of Sturbridge right now, and so we just want to make sure that everybody's aware that, you know...
We're aware.
Okay.
And we also have a collective bargaining agreement, where there are certain roles and responsibilities between the membership of the union and management, and those roles should be respected. And again, I believe tonight, we overcame some of those hurdles, and we identified some of those roles and responsibilities, and we all agreed on some good things that we can use going forward.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Okay. Anyone else? Ian, I did get an answer to your question on the east-west reel.
Yep.
There is no planned staffing as fulfilled on 49.
Okay.
There is one in Palm, not eastbound.
This was specifically inquiring on the 49.
That's going back a ways.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion then to go into executive session?
So moved.
Well, Jase has to read the...
No, I'm with you, I'll second that, Jim. Executive session, per MGL C30A, section 21, to consider or interview applicants for employment by a preliminary screening committee. If the chair declares that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect in obtaining qualified applicants, this shall not apply to any meeting regarding applicants who have passed a prior preliminary screening.
Okay, so declared. Is there a second? Ian, had you vote?
Yes.
Jase?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yep.
And I vote yes.
All right, you have a minute to shut everything off, and then I'm going to fire up a new meeting, because Mary Dan will join us.
Good night.
Good night.
Kaylee.